I'll call this meeting any more to supervise a meeting to order and as we begin all meetings, we'll stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Kendra Hayden. I guess she's behind the post there. And then after that, remain standing for Stephanie Porter Nichols to lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me in prayer? God of all seasons, including hot days and thunderstorms, we seek your guiding presence along this meeting and with these your leaders. We know that agendas and physical years are human-made, but we bring them before you seeking your blessing and your guidance. Grant us the opportunity to reflect on what has been done this year and what is planned for the year to come. May it all be for the best of Smith County's people. And when endeavors are put forward and it seems only two fish and a few loaves of bread are available, bring your abundance and bless this community. And in this time of so much division, as we approach Independence Day, may the celebrations worked hard, so hard for here, give people pause to think of the incredible nature of this democracy and its fragility. We pray for your blessings for this country and all who serve it in whatever capacity they do so. Keep us and guide us all in the footsteps of Jesus Christ, our Savior, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Once again, welcome to you, y'all. It's good to have you here with us tonight. At least we got a cool in here, so it's comfortable. Amendments to the agenda? As far as I know, we have no amendments.
Yes, sir.
Moving on in with minutes of the previous meeting. We got a couple of clerical corrections, but not a worry of anything else. Moving to approve. Okay. Have a motion in the second. That's approved with the correction of the errors.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify, I would say aye. Any opposed likewise. Looks like it carries. Presentation, we begin with the Explorer After School Program. Julie Looney is here to discuss that with us.
Do you want to just click the...
Can I? Where?
It's right there.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Yeah, I can click or you can click. I can tell you when to do it. Doesn't matter to me. Hello, nice to see you all again. I'm here to, do I just? Um, let's see. There we go. I'm here to give you all an end of year update, wrap-up about the Explorers After School Program. Again, my name is Julie Looney. I met some of you at the December board meeting, so it's nice to see you all again and be back to share how we ended the year. My full-time job is a school counselor at Marion Senior, and this was my first full year being director of this program. Things ended, things went great this year, honestly. As with any program like this, any public service, there's always little hiccups that happen, but nothing, thanks. I can usually project, but thank you. But nothing that we weren't able to very, very easily overcome. It was, it was a great year. The feedback that I received from my staff was so positive this year, so I feel really good moving into the new, the new school year. I've just, I've got three points to hit on tonight. Our program numbers and details for where we ended the year, the community partnerships that happened this year, I know that's an important piece for you all, and then future of the program. So for this school year, we served five of the elementary schools in Smith County, which is all of the elementary schools except for Rich Valley and Saltville, as I shared in December. There is ongoing, hopefully, communication with administration from those two schools because I want to see them involved in this program. We served 95 students total this year, which was incredible. I am hoping and hopeful that we can hit 100 for this coming school year because there were students that had to be turned away just for staffing reasons. We try to keep our number at 10 students to one teacher, so there were students and families that we had to say, right now, we just don't have room. So I think 95 students was a huge success for us this year. We have 25 staff right now that are employed for the program across the five schools. This does not mean that 25 staff necessarily work every day. This includes daily and then also people that are on retainer for us to inquire with them about being a substitute on any day that we need them, but that is where our staff falls right now. We ran the program from August to May. The program runs Monday through Friday with very, very few times that we are not in session for after-school. Our teachers are very dedicated to the program, so there are rarely ever times that we have to not have the program on any given day. This is a breakdown of the numbers by school, if you all are interested in that. Atkins and Sugar Grove are definitely two schools that are already involved that I want to see growth for next year, and I, I think that that's definitely doable. 95 total students. We actually had a growth of 15 students. I look back at the numbers that I presented to you all in December, but we had a growth of 15 students from my December update to where we ended the year. I don't know, I'm just, I'm very, very happy with where we landed. Like I said, 10 students to one teacher ratio for safety, and there's always at least two teachers there at every site. Our community partnerships that happened for this year were with the Public Library. That was at Marion Elementary School and at Oak Point. The Public Library reached out to me, so I would love to see the Public Library navigate its way into the other schools. I think these two schools will definitely be on their agenda for next year as well, but I would like to see it happen at the other schools. Our Spanish program, I gave an update to Lisa and Sean, I guess it's probably been a month or so ago now, but this was such a great addition to the program. Ms. Martin Trinka is a Spanish teacher at Marion Middle School and at Marion Senior, and she reached out to me and wanted to implement a program that got kids excited about learning a world language at a young age, which isn't happening in our schools right now. This was amazing. She did it twice a month. She's already on board to come back this coming year and will also be doing Oak Point as well, so I'm very excited about that. And then the ENH Health Sciences School, we had a group of those students that did like a healthy lifestyles program at Oak Point as part of their doctorate program that they're getting in OT and PT at the Health Sciences School, which was a huge success. The kids had so much fun, the parents loved it. Small kids are always fascinated by the kids, so to speak, and to them, those college students, they still look like, you know, high schoolers, just older kids to them, so they really embraced that and loved it. These three programs definitely, well, the Health Sciences School, I think we will get another group that wants to do that next year, so these three programs are on board for next year. And then also the Student Council Association, the SCA, at Marion Senior is also going to be collaborating with us, I already know for sure, for this coming year, for those kids to get community service hours. Okay, future of the program. I hit on some of these things in December, but this is where we landed at the end of the year. Of course, I want to get participation from the Saltville schools, so I'm going to be working with those administrations to hopefully make that happen, figure out why there isn't participation right now. I think that's the primary thing, is what is the factor that would get your families involved with the program? Online cashless payment option for parents, I know that that is coming, so I'm really excited about that. That's gonna make it easier on everybody. I mentioned this in December, I spoke with Sean and with Lisa about this. Hoping for a raise for staff. I don't know where that landed with the budget, but I definitely think that they deserve it because they are giving so much of their time, and it's so much more than, you know, a babysitting service. They are, they are giving educational experiences to the kids while they are with them. Another goal regarding the staff for this year is a staff orientation at the beginning of this year. The staff was really receptive to just having all of us come together, and that felt like a need. As I went through the year, I was realizing there are just some things that have never fully been communicated even before I got there, so probably gonna host this either at Oak Point or at the high school for all of the staff, including the substitutes, to come together and kind of know where we all are as we start the new year. And then, of course, the last point, growth at the smaller schools, the schools that are participating, but I would like to see growth, which is Atkins and Sugar Grove, and then sponsorships or scholarships for students whose family really needs our program, but maybe they can't afford the $30 a week for the service. So that is, that is another point that would take collaboration, but I, I do want to mention that because I think it could be important for the growth of the program. Of course, parents always are giving feedback, especially at the end of the year. I hope this program happens next year. We need this program. Our family needs this program. Just really, really kind words from the community. If you all have any questions for me, I am happy to answer them now. I'm also happy to share my presentation, so you all have the numbers, but overall, the program is, is still a huge success in the community, and it's well-received by the community. The partnerships are making that difference. I think those community partnerships that happened this year especially is helping with the growth of the program. The article that was featured in the paper in January from where I came and presented to you all in December, I think was incredibly significant, and I'm just, I'm really proud of all the work that's gone into this program and keeping it going and growing.
I'd like to say thank you, our long-term comments, school administrators, flexibility working, and if you had an issue, you did a good job working through it, so appreciate your leadership in the program.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd also like to say real quick that I think it is very important, the scholarship in, if we can try to figure out the best way to do that. I don't even know with the way this is set up, if it's even possible for people to donate, because a lot of times people donate or stuff like that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Even organizations, yes. So this is a great program. I've seen it firsthand. You guys do amazing work, and it is needed, you know, daycare is, it's hard to get.
It's hard to get affordable care.
Right. And affordable.
With well-qualified, you know, individuals.
Well, and this is, you know, I've heard people say, well, I don't mind getting the kids at school this many hours a day, but it's different.
It is.
And, and, and the kids that are in the program see it as being different, so I'm very appreciative of the program and thank you guys for all you do.
Yeah, thank you for supporting it. I appreciate all the kind words so much. I really do.
We thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
I guess we're moving on now to the public hearing. None scheduled, none going snuck in on us.
Yes, sir.
So we'll go right into citizens' time, and I'll look at citizens' time. You have three minutes to talk about anything and everything except us. You can't complain about us. And Mr. Fulton, you're number one.
Thank you. David Fulton from Marion. I know what I am going to mention will send chill bumps up your back, but I spoke with Mr. Atkins a couple of days ago. He said my idea was good, but it would be a nightmare. And I just spoke with Mr. Avery in the back, and he agreed, but I would like to see a tax, a food tax exemption week or maybe a month. I know food tax bringing a lot of money for revenue on the budget. It got good points, and I guess it also had bad points. Thought I'd just throw that idea out and see what you think about it.
Restaurants, grocery stores.
Across the board. I mean, I know it bring in quite a bit of money, and it would be a nightmare, but...
No kidding. The food tax is only on prepared meals, so like food cities.
We don't control grocery stores.
Well, that's my idea.
Something we can look into and see. When we talk about accounting, you know, accounting's pointing you out a nightmare because a lot of people, the way they got their system set up, they can't, they're ground crazy, and it's only one day, but it's still ground crazy.
Well, it could be a week or a month. I mean, again, I know it bring in revenue, but just think, if Smith County advertised a no food tax, what other business would come, you know, how many people would come in to, to Smith County for that time? Thank you.
Thank you. Wouldn't you have to get the towns to agree to that?
I think so.
That would be even separate because they got a different one. You'd have to fight the towns and then fight the county. Speaking of towns, Mayor Cornet, you're filling in on something. Come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Avery Cornet, 104 Panorama Drive, Marion, Virginia, Mayor Marion, Virginia. And I'm here to say personally, Courtney, thank you. Jason, thank you. Charlie, thank you. Mike, thank you. Chris, thank you. Rick, thank you. Roscoe, thank you. We appreciate very much your cooperation with the town of Marion and your partnership with some of the things that we've been doing this year. I think it's worked very well for, I hope it's a mutual benefit, but it has really benefited the town of Marion, and I wanted to tell you all personally that we appreciate it. Sean, thank you too. But all I wanted to say was thank you. I hope that going forward into this fiscal year, we can continue our endeavors together, and if there's anything the town of Marion can do to ensure that that happens, I, as the mayor, will do everything that I can do, and I think that I have council's cooperation that we really do enjoy having a good working relationship with Smith County Board Supervisors. And that being said, I will answer any question that you would like to ask me, and I have probably a minute and 30 seconds left, so I'll also invite you to the Crab Fest, to our Hungriest Mother Festival, to our Chili Cook-Off that's coming up later on, and say again, thank you for the hungry mothers, for baseball returning to Marion, and for all the other things that you've done for us, including EMS. Any questions that you would like to ask me while you have me here on the hot seat?
I thank you for your willingness to sit down and work with us. Like I said, we're all the same gang, it's just we're all building different pots of money, but...
Absolutely. There'll be some tough decisions. I understand that, and I think we all understand that.
As we discussed the other evening, I just appreciate your willingness to come to the board and, and, and speak with us. I, I, I think it's that good open relationships that can only benefit, you know, Smith County as a whole, not just Smith County and the towns, and, and everybody builds their little walls around each other. I think it can only benefit us as a, as a whole community.
I think we're building bridges.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you all again.
Thank you. But I don't have your phone number. I need to get that.
Oh. If you want that now.
No, I'll get it from you later.
Okay. Will do.
It makes it handy sometimes if something comes up and I need to talk to you.
I will make sure you have that before the night's out.
Alrighty, and the next speaker I have to apologize to because I'm trying to get him a list of employees, and they promised they'd text it, not text, email it to me, and I'm still looking for it. So I'm still working on that list.
Thank you. Just a number.
Miss, I, I, I want you to have a breakdown, so Mr. Lawson, come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Charles Lawson, Wasona, Marion. While you're considering the meals tax, offer, consider, you know, with the property tax, there are communities in the country that are working on that and that do it. If you have to pay a tax on your property, you don't really own it the way you should, but that wasn't what my point is today. July 4th coming up, celebrate the Declaration of Independence, signing the Declaration of Independence. And one thing that I think has come from, kind of as a precedent, and was there before, was in many of the dealings, various states' conventions, and in the Second Continental Congress and whatnot, God was a very important part of that discussion. And I'd just like to point out four places in the Declaration of Independence where God is called upon, and the first is, when the course of human events becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands that have connected them with one another and to assume among the powers of the earth, separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them. That's number one. Number two, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, they are endowed by their Creator with certain and able rights. So nature's God, their Creator, that's capitalized. And number three, we therefore, the representatives of the United States of America and General Congress assembled, appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world. America, Christian nation, and it's nice, I think, town, most towns and communities across the country, except in some states, they don't do it very much. Have a prayer and pledge of allegiance, and the prayer is usually in the name of, is to our heavenly Father, to God our heavenly Father, and usually in the name of Jesus Christ, or the name of Jesus Christ. But the last one is the closing sentence, and for the support of this declaration with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. So among the fireworks and all that, I think it's important to remember, it's God gave us our freedom, and we need to be continually aware, particularly in July 4th, that it's a lot more than fireworks. It's fulfilling our mission as a Christian nation and thanking God for our freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Moving right on now into whole business. We have a committee reports, beginning with the Personnel Committee. Mr. Sturgill. Now, would you like to read that?
I'd be happy to. Sure. So the Personnel Committee met on June 18th. Several items to discuss. The first one, Mr. Williams gave the committee an update on Cody Ridge, who was hired as a building inspector. He will be completing the final step to become a certified building official in the coming weeks, and it was Mr. Williams' recommendation for the board to consider appointing Mr. Ridge as building official effective July 1st, following committee recommendation, recommendation was made. Atkins District Supervisor Charlie Atkins made a motion to recommend appointing Cody Ridge as building official. A motion was seconded by Chillicothe District Supervisor Michael Sturgill and unanimously approved. And I will go ahead and add in to, since we're close to the end of the month anyway, I would say that would be, should be effective July 1st.
He did pass.
He literally, I think he just has to attend a meeting, one session, and he doesn't have to take more tests. He already taken everything.
He already passed the test. He just had to wait for Virginia's class, which he finished probably 30 minutes ago.
Okay. Do we need to do a study on that?
We can.
Alright, that's the committee recommendation. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify, I would say aye. Any opposed likewise. Looks like we just got one more building official round.
Next item we discussed, Ms. Vice, Human Resource Manager Kristi Vice, presented proposed changes to the county's travel policies for personnel. The new policy proposal would basically follow the U.S. General Services Administration guidelines, which has, they have formulas and sets up different, different amounts for different locations than are where you're traveling, and that would replace the county's current flat rate of $30, $35 a day. Mr. Sturgill did recommend including specifications that certain special situations will be approved on a case-by-case basis by the county administrator or designated to account for unique schedules, just in case something silly happens. Who knows? You can't pay for everything. Following recommendation, recommendation was made, Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend approving the personnel travel policy as amended, and Mr. Sturgill seconded the motion and is a unanimous recommendation from committee.
Alrighty. He put well says, and I'll, any further discussion?
I have a question on this. This, so the program's based on the location that...
That you're traveling to.
That you're traveling to for training or where. Is it? Was it?
There's a...
Is the individual paid ahead of time for that, or did they...
I don't think there's advances they pay afterwards, and I guess the special situations can be approved for if there was travel advance needed.
You know, once they're only gone for two weeks, you know, we wouldn't expect to spend two weeks out of their own pocket.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
That, we, we debated that in committee, you know, overnight, it shouldn't be a problem, right? Extended trip or something, we needed to have some way where we could give it something. One kind of question is, should I ask this in committee? Why did we adopt this long? This has been around for years, but we've always wanted to build our own policy. Why?
I think at one time they were, they was concerned about costs or the, the, keep it up with it, but now it's, it used to be that you had to look up so many different booklets or whatever. Now it's all on the websites, you know, it's all on the internet. You can do a travel forum in two minutes, so it's a lot easier for the employees to cover it too now.
Well, I'm hoping we'll still keep an eye on costs, but...
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir. We, we still have the budget that we have to make, you know, to stay with.
I think one advantage is that you don't have to keep up with your receipts. Like you're allowed something per day, you don't have to keep up with them.
Yeah, I remember, you know, back in the day, you'd stop and have breakfast at McDonald's and ask them for a receipt net. What?
Yeah.
You know, it stopped everything, so... Alright, any other discussion? Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify, I would say aye. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries.
Okay, next item the committee discussed was proposed social media, media policy. Ms. Vice did present a proposed social media policy for the county personnel that would offer recommended guidance for employees using social media, and it was strongly, it was discussed a lot about being guidance rather than requirements because we don't want to tread on any freedom of speech concerns. Committee did discuss it a lot. Ms. Vice noted that it was proposed, the proposed policy is based on policies used by Fairfax County School System and reviewed by the attorney. Following recommendation was made, Mr. Atkins made a recommendation to adopt the personnel social media policy as presented, and the motion was seconded by Mr. Sturgill and unanimously approved as a recommendation from committee.
I'd like to point out that Mike and I sit for the only two committee members at that meeting, and that's why I'm making all the motions that he seconded. As the chair, he couldn't make the motion, so... So any more, any discussion? This is a hot topic. I'm not a social media person, but you can, as we've seen this week with some of the stuff over there, you can create a big problem just by short posts sometimes, thinking you're not doing anything bad, and all of a sudden it's blown, and so people just need to be careful if they're gonna use social media. So people just need to be careful if they're going to use social media. Can't say that enough.
Has Fairfax County had any issue since they've implemented the policy?
I honestly have no idea. I just know that not having, not having any kind of policy at all kind of opens this up to, to vary, variety of lawsuits. I think that if you see in the packet on 34 of the PDF, Mr. Farling gave a good answer about, you know, why we should, we may want to do this just for confidentiality. But we also want to make sure it doesn't limit the freedom of speech. You know, if someone has the right to, to speak their mind, but I guess the concern is if someone goes to the social media and says, me as county mistress of this county, I think X, Y, Z is the stupidest thing in the world. That would be not, that would not be a good idea to, for the county and not air well. So I think we just want to make sure we have some type of coverage for ourselves.
I just recently copied the talking from Fairfax County. And, you know, just a big period of, that, you know, usually if you're going to run into a problem, it's going to be a jurisdiction like that. So I would, I would assume they're pretty squared away on the policies.
They probably have more attorneys on staff than we do on disability, so.
All right, that's a, I guess we need to adopt this. The social media policy is presented, committee recommendation, although any further discussion first off?
If it's just a recommendation, is it, is there any repercussions if they don't follow the guidance?
It's a policy, right? The employees have to follow policy. And if they don't follow the policy, then it's a reason to discharge you.
I think you should grab some over with them when they're first hired and first issued later. You've got some grams there to fall back on.
Because I've seen some pretty rough comments made by some county employees over the years.
You? I'm sorry. I'm trying to say it's not clear.
Can I ask one more thing with this on the county employee side?
Can you do it all?
If this, if this is passed and implemented, is there going to be a, something that, with the county employees that we can verify that the...
Christie talked about forming a document that we have now with our internet policy. We have a document where they read it, they sign that they've read it. And Christie talked about doing the same thing there.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of implementing the social media policy as presented signify the same eye. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries.
Okay, next item we discussed was, dealt with salary scale updates to the county's salary, salary scale for public safety employees. That's for EMS employees specifically, EMT basic, EMT intermediate, paramedic, deputy director and director. We had on the, where they show, or where they should fall on the proposed salary scale. It's on page 40 of your PDF. Following discussion, Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend updating the firing EMS pay scale as presented. Mr. Sturgill seconded it and it was unanimous recommendation. This is just to get everything official, because we have the employees. We just failed to update our salary scale when we first hired them, when we first started the EMS program last year. So it's just trying to catch up, play catch up.
All right, any discussion?
When we advertise, in this scale, where do we advertise? Do we advertise the starting salary, the mid-salary?
I think we advertise the range.
Well, how the range or was it based on experience?
Or don't put a number in, just D O, yeah.
D O Q.
D O Q. I prefer to, to put on, put on a D O Q, because we advertise a range for EMT basic. It's $39,000 to $53,000. Unless that EMT has 30 years of experience, they're not going to make the $53,000.
I wouldn't say if they got 30 years of experience, it's, just from somebody that's been there.
Yeah.
I think sometimes years don't always transition into skills.
Sure.
So sometimes somebody that's younger, has more training and has a higher level of...
Skills.
Skill than somebody that has, so.
That's why I'm going for the D O Q.
I didn't know if we took that into effect or...
Yeah.
We do.
Any more questions? Committee recommendation, all those in favor of the updating the firing EMS pay scales as presented signify the same eye. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries.
Okay, and just one final item we discussed at Personnel Committee, was just an update regarding public safety employees to work a different shift schedule than other county employees, kind of dealing with leave and payout. So the board, the committee asked us to come back with some recommendations and we'll be doing that at the next committee meeting. And that's all we have for Personnel Committee.
Just keep right on going now, Budget Committee, please.
Happy, happy to. Budget Committee met on June 18th. First item we discussed was FY '25 supplemental appropriation request. I did note that our general fund appropriation request each quarter has been the same amount for the last three years, even though our budgets have increased. It's finally starting to catch up to us, so we needed to do a $1.2 million appropriation, supplemental appropriation. Following discussion, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to recommend approving FY '25 supplemental appropriation request to cover additional costs for the general fund in the amount of $1.2 million. Mr. Courtney Widener seconded the motion and it was unanimous recommendation from committee.
All right, any discussion? I believe at the committee meeting, we were told that that does not appropriate all the rest of our funds. They still unappropriated.
There's, there's a lot of money there.
So that sounds like we've done a halfway decent job of saying within our budget this year.
Yes, sir.
Which I think we need to strive for.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, that's committee recommendation. All those in favor signify the same eye. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries.
Next item we discussed is Budget Amendment Number 12, which is what I would call the true-up amendment, where we move shifting money from one department to another if there were some issues with overspending or emergency needs. The total amount was, I have it here, $785,451. That does include capturing some additional personal property taxes that weren't on the books and some grant funds from FEMA wellness grant and, I'm looking here, additional funds in the 744 account. Also, that's following a conversation with Mr. Paris. He made a good, I had a good idea. If you look at the yellow tab, there's some kind of expanded summary of where we stand as of yesterday with our budget and expenditures. You can kind of see a percentage spent for each line. And in the front page is our notes that would kind of explain why some, some departments were overspent and the fixes. The Budget Amendment Number 12 fixes the lion's share of the overspending. I will say the only one that will be shown as, as heavy overspending will be solid waste and it's tied back to the Hurricane Helene debris removal that we didn't charge customers for, but we did have costs when we took it to, took our waste to, to the landfill. Following discussion on everything, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to recommend approval of Budget Amendment Number 12 as presented and the motion was seconded by Mr. Widener as unanimous recommendation from committee.
So all right, committee recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the same eye. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries.
Third agenda item, 2024 airplane assessment of revenue sharing that we have with, with county. Commission revenue reported a total of $25,682.55 was as revenue generated from the airport. 50% would be paid to with county according to our revenue sharing agreement. That amount's $12,841.28. I did verify that that number was, was accurate following the committee meeting. So Mr. Sturgill, after discussion, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to recommend approval of the 2024 airplane assessment information letter. Upon verification of the amount due at $12,841.28, motion was seconded by Mr. Widener and unanimously approved as a recommendation from committee.
All right, committee recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the same eye. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries.
Next item we discussed would be the first quarter appropriations for FY '26. You see there a list on the guidance sheet, total appropriation request of $36,484,611 for all the various departments and funds that we control. Following discussion, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to recommend approval of the first quarter appropriation request in the amount of $36,844,611 as presented and the motion was seconded by Mr. Widener unanimously approved as a recommendation from committee.
We're a bunch of drunken sailors tonight. We're giving money away like crazy.
It's all on paper, trust me.
No offense to sailors, by the way. All right, any, any discussion? I'd like to note that, and I hate to pick up on it, but the big item here is the school operating budget. And we're working on their money in first quarter, so.
They, they help us continue.
Yeah. So.
Big money to ride the train.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify the same eye. Any... This is just the school one?
No, it's everything.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries.
That's all we have for budget.
All righty. New business items, school board category adjustments.
Okay, so in your folder on the red tab is the memo from the school board. They just approved this at their, at their earlier meeting this week. And what they're trying to true up their budget, so they're asking to transfer $105,000 from transportation to administration, $110,000 from food service to operations and maintenance, and $475,000 from instruction to operations and maintenance. What this will do is all of the funds that'll be carried over will be, I guess, going into the operations available for the capital projects for next year. But I don't, I don't have the number for what they'll be transferring over or rolling over into next year, but I expect it to be in excess of a million dollars just because of all the state funds that they've been getting and they've been working out. So I would recommend that the board consider these adjustments in a possible minute.
Anyway, this is not, this clarified my mind. This is not a vote to allow them to carry it over, this is just a vote to let them read.
They're basically shuffling around money for FY '25 to make the, their budgets balanced.
And they still have to come, once they arrive at their final unspent amount, they still have to come back to us to, for us to approve them carrying it over.
Yes, sir. And I expect that, that to happen in August, usually is the way we do it.
Everybody understand that? Any further discussion?
We just don't have a, we need a motion to second it, but that's all we have.
All right, it didn't come out of committee. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Widener made the motion and he's seconded it. Rick seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the same eye. Any opposed likewise? We have one extension, six, oh, one. DHCD memorandum of understanding for disaster relief programs.
So the state has quite, $15 million that have been approved for FY '26 for disaster-related mitigation efforts for the hurricane and for the February flooding also. $25 million that will be part of Phase 1 and I expect 25, the other 25 million would be for Phase 2. The initial funding can help with residential and commercial repairs. And in order for us to be qualified, we have to have an MOU with the state. And it's, this is a different program than anything they've done that I've been part of, whereby Mr. Paris would apply for, if he had $100,000 of damage to his house, $10,000 was paid out from FEMA and $10,000 was paid out from insurance, for instance. So he had an $80,000 gap. This fund would pay that $80,000 gap. So we would be the, the middle man, for lack of a better term, to provide that $80,000 to help, help the citizens. We're, we're working with the PDC because I expect several localities in the Mount Rogers area to, to be part of this. And it might be that we can sign this MOU and designate the PDC as our administrator and let them take care of everything. In a perfect world, that would happen and they could take care of Grand Center in Washington and everybody that had the issues. But the first step is to adopt the MOU. The only, there is a blank in this MOU that's for, we're supposed to put together a staffing plan. And according, as we've talked with the HCDs, this we, we have finalized things with the PDC, which I expect we will, but we haven't yet. I would just insert the PDC as, as that staffing plan and leave it at that. But I would like to recommend approval with, with that note. Just so we can go ahead and get, move forward, because the quicker we get this, the quicker we can start. We get folks qualified. It would come, well, it depends. So if we can have the PDC as the regional administrator, the money will go to the PDC and they'll, they'll do everything and all we have to do is check, check off on each applicant. If, if, and this is going up the food chain at the HCD. Otherwise, if that doesn't happen, it'll come through us and we'll just send it right back out.
So when you're talking about staffing, that 50 million is going to the people. It's not, it's not ever paid for staffing, it's not...
We can, there's a percentage that's available, but it's a small percentage.
I just want to make sure, you know, it's not one of the government agencies where all of a sudden they're going to eat everything up in salaries and they're going to hang $10 everywhere.
The lion's share is going out.
They'll go to the study.
Yeah, they'd go to a study.
Right.
So, any motion? Yes, I would like to make that motion also include the finalizing the staffing plan.
Mount Rogers PDC.
We have a motion and a second to establish this memorandum of under, I can't talk. Memorandum of understanding with the, with the Michigan Department of Housing and Community Development. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the same eye. Any opposed likewise? Moving on.
Here we go, Miss Ladies' Appointments. We could start with Whipple Community College. We do have a vacancy there. I apologize, I didn't get a chance to get with, with you guys before the meeting, but is there, do we have a...
I have a name and I, and I, we think it would be a good one, but I need to talk to her first to make sure she knows and can attend meetings and so forth.
Okay, so we can skip this one for now.
I'm going to get in contact with her and find out. Now, did we have another name come up at a prior meeting? For some reason, I'm thinking that Patton was mentioning it. His health right now is not good. You know, I mentioned at that meeting, but I checked on that and Patton's not doing well.
We can put it on the next agenda.
Okay. Moving on to the Rye Valley Water Authority, I believe that's Mr. Paris.
Yes, sir. At this point, I would like to make these nominations for the Rye Valley Water Board. In a one-year to try to get them back on a, where they're not all flipping at the same time. For a one-year would be Bobby Kell and William Farmer. And that would, for, to expire 6/30/2026. And then for a three-year would be Danny Slith and Sam Parsons to expire 6/30/2028. And that would kind of get them back to their four-year terms, but it would...
Rotation.
It would keep the rotation intact.
Who, what was the fourth name?
It's Danny Slith and Sam Parsons for the, for the three-year to basically get them back to the 2028 end time. And then Bobby Kell and William Farmer, Bill Farmer for 6/30/2026, basically a one-year.
Oh, man, I know Mr. Farmer.
He's, he's been there for quite some time.
King of the board now.
He currently is, yes. These are current board members willing to serve.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Call. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? Congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Also need to roll on, need to appoint a representative to the EDA. I think this would be to fill the three-year term left open.
Mr. Fleschman.
Where Mr. Fleschman decided they only served one year, and, and we would like to, you know, thank him for his time. I know that they gave so, this week in the meeting, but I would like to thank him for his long, long tenure. But with that, I'd like to nominate Larry Atwood to fill that term, three-year term ending 6/30/2028.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, what, the Roshko. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? Does that guy have an appointment to make for the EDA outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an appointment to Ms. Amy Rochelle. She's gone left, I wonder if she's here. McVeigh, we nominate her for a four-year term. She's done a great job. The term will go to June 20, 29, and she's been there for a while, done a great job, and everybody brags on her for being the first female on there, I believe, and I'm very proud of her.
Okay.
I'd like to make that nomination. We have a second?
I have a second.
No, a couple of seconds. Any further discussion?
Amy, right.
Yeah.
Rochelle in there, I don't know what that's about, but.
I'm the only one in the state of Virginia that cops are there.
Not anymore.
That's what I said, I'm going to your, no, two more. She, she's been very, she's been very active on the boards, so I think it's a good nomination.
She's just like a member of my family.
Any, any other comments? Questions, discussion? All those in favor signify the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? All right, any more economic development appointments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to the Smith County Public Library Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the nomination of Gwen Combs to, to fill that term expiring 6/30/29, I guess, to, to fill that, he, he served on the school board and in such, I was correct out to him, I know he was, you know, wanting to serve, and he, he indicated that he would, he was, he's got the time, and, and I feel that he would make a good representative there.
Is this a district specific?
It is.
Okay. It really doesn't matter, he's a good person, he's a good person, but I just.
Well, he's a good person, and he's from the Rye Valley, so, I mean, it's, it's a win-win.
He had to be good from the Rye Valley, right? Now, a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? All right, any other appointments you know, we need to, anybody know of anyone that they need to appoint?
They could get into about October.
Okay. Our next meeting, when I'll try to ask somebody to go to Community College. Go down to our county attorney who has nothing to report.
You're correct, Mr. Chairman.
Just to keep us out of trouble, report McGann, the administrator in stand.
I do have a few quick items. As we were putting together the supplemental appropriations, one did fall through the cracks on my email, a black hole, my, my email inbox noticed a black hole. Fund 746, the sheriff's federal assets, they have some, some invoices they want to pay, and we need to appropriate $25,000 to finalize that fund out. I'd make, like to make that recommendation.
Someone will make a motion?
No move.
Have a motion and a second. Yeah, the office already, I do did one. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise?
I have a second.
Six oh one.
Okay, next item, sponsorship of Rich Valley Fair. The EDA generally partners with the county to pay half for a $3,500 sponsorship, I think we, it's a mu, music, a kid's music.
Music and youth talent show.
Yeah, kid, music and youth talent show. I'd just like to go ahead and have that as a recommendation to the board, so I can finalize things. It would be $1,750 from the county, $1,750 from the EDA, which they've already approved it.
Now, with that being, this year's budget are in one, we get ready to.
I'd like to wait and pay it out this year.
Pay it out this year.
Yeah, we can. Mrs. Doherty may not like that.
Does it, does it ever, I mean, does it truly help get them what they need on that, or, I mean, is there any still shortfalls for that?
Honestly, without that sponsorship, they couldn't provide the music that they need. That's been one of their downfalls over the past couple of years, which is why the EDA has stepped up, and, and your partnership has also stepped up to help them kind of cover that gap for the music part of it. And, and the youth portion, we just like to sponsor that because it's a, a give back to the community and get the kids involved, and that's the reason we like to have that.
I don't know what the, they do get other sponsorships, this is kind of like their pledge, it's a, a gather closure, but they're, without this, they don't do it, but they do have other funds that, with other sponsorships.
I was just thinking, and, and I'm not sure, I can't remember the current budget, you know, supervisors have usually had something, but if there's something that, there is a major shortfall, or something, I would just, I mean, obviously, everybody's going to ask for money, but, but if there's a specific thing they're, they're concerned about that may not be able to continue, I think maybe that's something we could help.
Oh, yeah, Patty would love to, to talk about that for first, you don't always.
So, what we decide?
$1,750? I think that, that's what they need this year.
If there's something.
Yeah. We could talk to them about planning something for that, we may be too late for anything new for this year, but we could talk to them early, earlier to figure out next year.
Mr. Campbell's still very involved in this.
Yes, sir.
In this. And, you know, I think, I'm looking forward to going over to the fair this year to see what we have to do with concessions and.
It'll be outside.
Yeah, air machine operations.
It'll be done, right?
Yes.
People expect it to be done, so.
Yeah. We've come a long way, so.
And the inside of the facilities are done?
It's, it's almost done, it's about 70% or so, but it would, it should be all finished by June.
So, recommendations from staff?
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that.
Have a motion, Mr. Wyner, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the $1,750 for the Rich Valley Fair? Yeah, $1,750. Sixty-five, I say aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? Now, you did mention something there, I think, Mr. Wyner, you know, we have, each, each supervisor has that little fund, if you haven't used it, you know, and you think this, this might be a good opportunity to help the fair out, or if you've got some other organization that may need the help. I mean, don't spend it just to spend it, but.
And that's why I think maybe just, maybe something they can ask, make sure that everything's, because we don't want to go backwards. And I, you know, and I know that's Mr. Billings area and stuff, and he's been very active and stuff over there, you know, we need to, we need to try to help out, that stuff.
Now, I know I sent Sean an email, I don't know if he ever got it or not, because I didn't get a response back.
Checks should be ready tomorrow.
Given part of mine, not all of it, part of mine to the 4H upstairs and to the 4H Center, you know, our youth, our future. And we, right now, our camping just updated, I don't know if this is the right time or not, but we have a full group going to camp, and several of them will need a little scholarship help, so I, I said that, you know, for camp, part of that money needs to go towards scholarships, so. I'm tickled that Smith County, once again, is camping a full camp. It's good for Smith County, but it's also good for the 4H Center, and if you haven't been down to the 4H Center the last few years, you need to stop in, introduce yourself, and take a tour with the director. I think it'll surprise you what we've got going on down there, so, but, anyway, that's what I did with my, my, some of my, about half of my money, the other half's still there, I think. So, did we vote on that? We did, didn't we?
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I didn't vote it down. All right, clarification of votes for that.
Yeah, so the, the last, last item, as we were going through the, preparing the minutes for the June 12th meeting, there were some audio concerns for three different votes, and what I'd like to ask is, the board consider taking new votes for adoption of the FY26 Smith County budget resolution as the first one, just so we know that specifically who made the motion, who seconded.
Okay, so we need someone to make a motion to approve the county budget resolution.
To approve.
And we need a second.
Second.
And we have a second.
Rick.
Mr. Call and Mr. Rick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye. Aye. Or whether you, show your right hand, that way we know our money approved it. Okay.
Next, the next one is the, the ordinance setting the water sewer service rates for FY26, that reminder that included a 9% across the board increase on service rates. We do need a, a motion and second for those.
So, move.
So, there you go.
I have a motion by Mr. Call and a second by Mr. Paris. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify, raise your right hand, that way you can see it. Motion approved.
And the last one, the planning commission recommendation for special use for the campground, that one was, was, we need a, a motion and second for that.
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Call made the motion, and Mr. Wyner seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify, raise your right hand again.
Any opposed?
One, two, three, four, five. All right, five, don't oppose likewise. Five to two.
That's all I have.
Supervisor comment time. Snuck up on.
Mr. Chairman, you, you mentioned the 4H sponsorships, do they still have a need for sponsorships? Do they have students?
I think mine have quite a bit, you might just check with Bailey upstairs and see.
Okay, so, how do we, if they need a few more dollars, how do we pledge the individual accounts?
Just to take action tonight, you'll direct me and.
We don't know, because I, I went Bailey's, I'll ask.
I got it right here.
If you, if you want to just direct me to, we can, it probably won't be very much left because we had that $13,000 grant from the, from the state forestry, and then Mr. Atkins, and that was another donations, but I can find out, and if it's, if it's okay, we could just, to your, your amount, yeah.
Yeah, so, we're allotted, what, 5,000?
5,000 total. Yes, sir. To make use of, of your allotment to finalize the scholarship needs, maybe, would that be a safe recommendation?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, yes. So, I guess that's my comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Call.
Do you want to go ahead and, and take a, make a vote for that, just to.
We don't need, actually, his money to spend, we don't need to vote on it, I don't think. If we vote on it, that's not allowed in the.
Does that mean?
Mr. Call.
I'd just like to say, thank the whole crowd for coming and hanging around, and the staff does a great job, good things ready, hope all of you have a straight home, loves you all.
Thank you, Mr. Call. Mr. Billings.
I had actually planned on giving to the 4H also, Sean, if there's anything, whatever.
Having a pretty sweet split between the two.
Shortfalls, whatever, but I can't remember what I had left.
Think you were like 2,800, maybe, it's around there.
Did the Solv, Fire Gamberi, or whatever, Nevo, and.
I had that back on my desk.
Just whoever needs it, it's fine, I mean, I had planned on that, anyway.
Okay.
Thanks to Sean for figuring everything out for us, I guess, and keeping up with everything. I told you I can't remember names, I was going to call you Annie, so thanks what you're doing. I like Annie, I can remember that. You're doing a good job. Maddie, is that right? I'll eventually get that, but you're Annie until I remember. Everybody's doing, I think everybody's doing a good job, we got a lot of good things going, and we need to keep it up. The more I sit here, the more I thought about the gentleman back there's recommendation that probably would be a good idea, if all the towns could get together and have like a one-day or two-day type thing, I don't know what kind of red tape it would be, but it'd probably go over really well. You go anywhere, and it's, it's, you thank your order and cheat until you get your bill and you see the tax on it, so. I know, I know that generates a lot of good funds, but who knows, you know, something, something different, something for the county may do good, so. I think we're on the right track, we need to keep it going into the next fiscal year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I'd like to thank all those in attendance for showing up, I'd like to see more people. I still say that local government is a participation sport, not a, not a sideline viewing sport, so, you know, I like, anytime we can get people in the communities involved and want to help, and, and that's, that's something we always need to do. Once again, all the local events coming up, I know we got fireworks here, Solv's having their, the firemen are having their gamberi over there on the fifth, I think, right? They're having that, so support that, especially during this time of year, when everybody's wanting to run out into, and go on vacation, you know, don't forget to support your local people while, while they're, during this vacation time as well. And then, once again, thanks to the staff, I did, I was, wasn't here the last time, I was traveling for work, but I, I would like to say, you know, I know that we, we didn't take a increase on taxes this year, and I know that it depends on which side of the argument you're on, it's, it's not, it's never favorable, but I, I do like the, or at least like the way we're going as far as, you know, kind of tightening the purse strings and doing what we can to make sure that we get what we need, but we, we put the needs in front of the wants, and we do what we can to, because every dollar that's pulled in is from the citizens, and we got to make sure that we're using what we get effectively, and not just, you know, take, I hate to say take because we can, sometimes, depends on the projects, but, but this time, I think it was a good time just to, just to pull back on that, so, I do appreciate it, thank you.
All right, yes, and thank you, Mr. Paris, Mr. Wyner.
He's late. I won't be very long, I say that every time.
I also agree with the, with the little bit of tax break there, I, I think it's a good idea, now, you know, the headache, I get that too. I know Virginia has a tax-free weekend for back-to-school stuff, and no, no pressure, Mr. Mayor, but I think it would be also, I, I know, I know you all would probably be more affected on that than anyone, but, but, you know, in a lot of ways, too, I just think that anytime we can get a chance to give somebody a break, even, you know, I, I know it's not a lot, you know, just, but, you know, it, it may help bring people in that, just because of that. I know a lot of people don't go shopping for school stuff unless it's tax-free weekend, so, you know, that's, that's always a possibility, maybe bring some numbers in that you may not otherwise get, and that might continue, so, I would like to urge everybody to at least look at that, too, I, I think, I think it's a good idea. Again, the festivities coming up for the Fourth of July weekend, please get out, support for other businesses during this time, and enjoy the festivities that, that the towns are offering, along with the county, and, and also, number one, as Mr. Lawson said, don't forget the real. forget the real reason while we're celebrating our independence, okay? So there's, there's a lot more involved there than everything else everybody gets excited about, so we've got a lot to be thankful for, and thank you for constantly reminding us of that, that's very much appreciated. Ms. Stephanie, thank you for the prayers, I mean, if, gosh, I don't know, it's, it's unlike anything I've ever witnessed or heard before, but you do an excellent job, and we really appreciate you doing that. And also to Sean, thank you for working so hard for the upcoming budget, I know, I don't know how much more revenue you can get up there, it's.
All right.
But I, I know there was a lot of stress, and, and in some ways, we probably don't help out with that, but, but thank you for all you guys have done to, to get us to where we're at and moving forward, and, and again, also, thanks, thanks for the staff, everything you guys do, it don't go in there. One more thing, Rossco, and I'm going to stop, I'm trying. So I, I want to just put out there again, I, I'm a really big advocate for, you know, things for families and children to do. I, I would like for us to continue to look, come up with something, whatever it may be, to some kind of festivities for a weekend or a week or something for, for the citizens, some type of fair or whatever. Yeah, county fair. I, I know Mr. Atkins has talked about that, being a big advocate for that, I think we all are, really. And yes, it, it does cost money, and, you know, but, but, you know, the citizens pay a lot of money just to live here, and I think in a lot of ways, they also need to be able to enjoy that a little bit, too, so I, I would just like to see us, you know, try to look for, maybe this coming year or something within the Parks and Rats, maybe getting committed together, trying to see, I know we're talking about the two-hundredth anniversary of Smith County coming up here in about seven years, but maybe we could start something even before that, and, and in that way, that can just work itself into it, so. That's my piece, thank you all, and thanks, everybody, for hanging around as long as you have, we usually don't have this many at the end of the meeting, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
I'd just like to, let me ask Mr. Redd, and he'd be in the direction of the county. Typically around the holidays, sometimes we do stuff for boys, maybe give them a half a day off or something like that. I don't know what your holiday files are, I know Fourth of July files on a Friday this year, potentially maybe closing down half a day on Thursday or something like that, I don't know. I think it'd be a nice gesture on our part, as a thanks for them, I don't know, I don't know anybody else's small things, so.
You tell me to do it, we, we can make it happen.
Except for the one, no.
Generally, what we do is.
With our usual exceptions of necessary.
Yeah. Because of convenience station, I had to take my phone off to look.
That won't happen. Just give them.
So. I will put that in form of a motion.
I will, I'll put that in form, I'd like to put that in form of a motion that we.
Close at twelve o'clock, July third?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hopefully, nobody's got anything planned for the second half of that day. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of a half a day, they, we, we do this off the start of the year, but we're going to add this to the other, I don't think this is end or is that. They'll use it wisely.
Yeah, they, they can get them a fifth for the fourth on the third.
I know there's a lot of people that travel at times, so I think.
All right, yeah, I think it gives them, maybe a chance to get, all out on the road and get there before the traffic really, really hits. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor signify the raising your right hand.
And. Thank you all, and like I said, we're, we closed out the fiscal year, and look forward to next year, and we just keep tweaking and tweaking, make things work a little better, I appreciate all the hard work, everyone, thank you.
If we do that tax, if we can talk the towns into it and do a tax-free, meals tax-free, I really think we need to do, you know, and it's putting us under the gun, I don't think we do it that quick, but Fourth of July or Labor Day weekend, because that way it would draw people into Smith County and help our businesses overall.
That just, that's been for tire sales, wouldn't it, to groceries?
Correct.
They think we, we can't have the grocery.
Kind of any, any place that collects meals tax would be.
Fourth of July, Friday, tense, would be great, because you've always got a lot of people coming.
Yeah, Tommy, I don't think.
I don't think we can get it done that quick, but maybe Labor Day would be a good time to draw people in. I, I think it'd be a good draw for local businesses, I really do. And also, remember, it's, we'd be here before we know it, Sunday night, July fifth, the Hungry Mothers will have their baseball game.
July sixth.
Sixth, yes, I'm sorry, July sixth, and we will have the fireworks after the baseball game, you know, fireworks are back in Smith County, and they assure us it's going to be enjoyable fireworks, so.
Home thinger.
Yeah, home thinger of the time.
We're playing at home, aren't we?
So, but we're not having fireworks out, we may have fireworks, but not sponsored by us, so. You know, I've heard for years, why don't Smith County ever do anything? So we're doing fireworks, people better show up, you know, if they don't come to the game, at least come somewhere and watch the fireworks.
That'd be right in the first one.
That'd be worth watching. That's all I have. Once again, I do like to say I appreciate the, the, the fact that we can discuss things, we can disagree, and we can still go on and discuss the next issue and still, and agree on that. I think it's important to be able to count things out. I appreciate this board, I appreciate the towns that we're able to work with, so, and I appreciate the staff, I think y'all do a good job, makes, makes it look easy for us, and it has not always been that way. So appreciate it, Clegg, Lisa, and the rest of the staff, I really appreciate y'all. Anna. I can remember Maddie, but. Having said that, we have a, our close supervisor's time, and we're going to have a closed session coming up with Mr. Stephen Spangler is going to join us, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in the area of the closed session, section two point two dash three seven one one, under eight five, business slash industrial prospect discussions concerning business or industry considering expansion, there's no previous announcements have been made regarding projects or just.
I'll say it again. Have a motion to second, all those in favor going into closed session, signify the raising your right hand. We're in closed session, unanimous.